Citizens present. We have a citizen present, does he want to comment? Okay. He says no comment. Uh, special order of business, well, the minutes. We have minutes for three different meetings, uh, January 27th, February 10th, and February 24th. Uh, let's take the, uh, minutes of the, uh, 27th, are there any corrections or additions?
I move for approval.
Second.
I have discussion, uh, for discussion, um, on page three, item five, it says, uh, agency members, oh, wait a minute here. I passed it up, anyway, it refers to the council, it shouldn't be the agency. I think we tend to kind of go back and forth, but I think to be politically correct, we need to have, show that as the agency.
I already corrected that.
Did you?
Part of it, it's a template problem that I have to have the company correct, but I went through and hand corrected, uh, that for all three agendas.
For all, for all three of the minutes?
For all three of the minutes, yeah.
Oh, good, okay, then I won't even mention the other two, okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Uh, can we lump the, uh, February 10th and the February 22nd into one motion?
I'd move to approve, uh, February 10th and February 24th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, item carries, or the motion carries. Now to the special order of business. Kurt Olson.
Lights please. Lights please. We'll work on that, good evening. As you are aware, one of the projects of the urban renewal development plan is the acquisition property to achieve the objectives of the plan. And those are basically to remove lighted conditions, to assemble land for development, and to complete improvement projects such as streets, sidewalks, parks, and parking lots. Our acquisitions over the years have actually accomplished all of those objectives, uh, in, in many of the, in several of the projects that we've done, in fact, the first actions that this agency ever took, the first projects we ever took, were to purchase property for public parking lots in the Ocean Lake area. The agency actually borrowed money from the city for those original purchases, and, uh, Seventeenth Street is an example of one of those parking lots that was purchased as one of the first urban renewal projects this agency took, undertook. Sometimes, um, our use of the sites that we purchase are actually temporary in nature, we'll do something knowing that in the future there may be a better use for the property. For example, a public parking lot, it may be a great interim use, but some, some higher value project may come along, and if we can still accommodate parking through some other means, uh, there wouldn't be any reason why we wouldn't want to redevelop a parking lot, for example. So, tonight, we wanted to just start, kind of start the discussion in thinking about the redevelopment of some of the properties that the agency owns. So, we're, we're going to look at three properties this evening and just kind of get some discussion going, uh, and, and see if you have any questions and see if there's any direction that you might want to, there's no action to take, it's just to kind of get the thoughts, thoughts moving, because we're feeling like the, uh, economic conditions are starting to improve, and it might be time to, um, to look at some requests for proposals on our properties. So, the first property, I'll, if, uh, just to let you know where we're at, this property is not actually owned by the agency, it was, um, it was received by the city, you know, in a swap with the fire department, and it's the little substation there, and that big white building at the bottom is Pier 101 Restaurant. And then the, what the property that's in the red box is the old, uh, TND, Taffin Elscott D-Lake Fire Department Substation, the D-Lake Substation. And so, our, uh, our office was asked to take a look at that site, that property, and see what kind of uses it might have, what kind of potential there might be for a, a building of that sort. As a standalone site, the potential really isn't that great, uh, the, the main thing is always parking, uh, so if the, if it, it can be used for what it's being used for now, or if there aren't major changes made to the building, it continue to be used, but if you were to make it, change it in any significant way, then you'd have to meet current parking requirements, which are pretty limited on that site. So, we thought that, uh, perhaps the only thing in standalone that would work would probably be something like a gallery, or maybe an incubator for an artist of some sort, so that they have sort of be work gallery space that might work, uh, for that site. But, there are probably some other potentials, and so, we looked at, this, this shows, I'm, I'm showing you this one first, and I'll turn it so we can see it a little better, but I wanted to be able to, let's see, can I go back at, no. So, so that this picture is the same as this picture. So, there, where the big block is, now where the writing is, is part of that, uh, of that TND site. But it also, so let me just turn the picture so it's a little easier to orient, to see the writing and stuff. So, you can see that if that property was combined with, say, the property across the street, and part of the parking lot there, and vacate the street, there'd be a pretty nice little development that could occur here, and, and it could be a three-story building, this shows about, um, it's about a 10,000 square foot, uh, footprint, so it could be a 30,000 square foot property, and probably get, um, you know, enough parking on the site. And then in addition to that, there is some of that additional property to the south that at the time, uh, it was for sale, um, the, the site where the restaurant is, uh, was for sale there for a while, I don't know what the current condition of it is, but so there, there are some ways to assemble some properties so that that property could be used for something, uh, in the future. We did, unfortunately, we did contact the property, the property owner that's just to the other side of the street to see if there was some interest, and maybe this was an idea that we could, um, kind of move forward a little bit, but there wasn't, it, that little house that if you, I'm seeing, seen it a zillion times, it kind of sits up a little bit above that parking lot, and apparently, the people that own it now, their grandfather built that years and years ago, and it's a really special little place for them, and so there really wasn't any interest on their part of selling at this point. But, uh, we wanted to give you an idea of some of the things that we go through in order to, um, look at some of the potential of some of the sites, and since we didn't really go out and buy that site, we just inherited it, we said, well, what are we going to do with it now, and so that's what we did for this, on this particular site.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before you leave that last slide, Kurt, that is a, a parking lot between Pier 101 and Coast Draft, drafting, is it? Currently, it's a parking lot?
No.
There, there's a small parking lot next to Coast Drafting, that's owned by the same person that owns the Coast Drafting Building, and that restaurant building, and that other house on Eb Street, that was for sale. And then the Pier 1, next to Pier 101, there is a little gravel parking area there, so, but the idea being that, you know, the agency maybe could come in there and, um, create a really nice parking lot, and do it like a shared parking lot, and that that owner of the Pier 101 would be amenable to that.
Where that driveway shows going into this pictured parking lot is actually a street that would have been vacated.
Right, we would have vacated that street, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Kurt, do you know the elevation, uh, is that property in that area in a flood zone? Or is it high enough out of?
I believe it's, it's high enough out of.
Out of that?
I'm not sure about the 60-foot inundation zone or tsunamis, but I, my, I don't think it's in the, in, in any other sort of flood zone. We did look at it as being the potential of that site being a view property, I mean, if you'd put a three-story house on there, which you could do, because you could meet the parking requirement for that, usually you park underneath it, but it isn't a very good location for a nice three-story home, uh, in that location, so we didn't think that that was a, a logical use.
That TND, uh, building is currently serving the backpack program very well, because they have their pantry in there.
Yeah.
I'd hate to see that go away.
So, the, the next site then is there at D River, the, we, we're calling it Hostetler Park, apparently, the Hostetler family, years and years ago, donated this site to the city, and also the site that the D-Lake School is on, and so, we brought that back as sort of a historic recognition when we, um, purchased that property. So, this kind of gives you an aerial view of the, of the, uh, the site. It was, uh, one time, a very vibrant community, there's probably a lot of people that remember these days, I sure do, when there were docks there, there was food there, uh, there was an A-frame house there at one time, that actually, they floated across the river and is now in, in Sam, at Sam Point. I hear people all the time tell me about, oh, I learned to swim there, and across the street was, uh, Calkins Marine, across the river was Calkins Marine and Boat Works, which is a well-known, they, I mean, they rivaled Chris Craft Boats there for many years, and it, uh, it was really a vibrant place. But, uh, there was an unsuccessful development proposal, uh, years, a few years back before we bought it, that would, that would put a motel on that site, in that configuration, and I'll add the aerial view so you can kind of see, uh, so the, so the area to your right would have been all parking, and the area to the left, up by the highway, would have been, uh, this, this planned motel unit, but it wasn't a successful, uh, proposal, and so that led to the agency partnering with the open space, the city's open space program, and the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District, to go in and purchase that property. So, the property that's all wooded to the right of the red area is, was purchased by open, with open space money, and has sort of been designated as being, uh, maintained in that regard, and then the property that, in red, the urban renewal agency purchased, thinking that at some point in time, that there would be, want, be some sort of a redevelopment of that site take place. So, we, we, we believe that we should continue to maintain public access to the lake at this site for now, and, and then on the adjoining piece, maintain the open space designation, but it seems like it might be time to consider, uh, requests for proposals to develop along the highway frontage. I think I have one more slide that shows in that area there, perhaps, um, being able to, uh, sell or lease the land, and do some sort of development on the highway. So, we're just bringing that forward as a little food for thought.
Kurt, would that, uh, Mr. Anderson's concern about the flood zone, uh, play a big part in that?
Well, I think if we were to use this area here, then we would build something that would be sort of, uh, daylight basement type of thing, so on the, at the, at the level of the street, on the sidewalk, would be shops, and then underneath would either be parking or some other use that would, um, you know, that, that would be able to accommodate that flooding issue over the years. But then, go ahead, and for now, we, because of that, the, uh, flood issues, that, that area, uh, where the parking lot is, you know, would be really hard to develop, anything you did there would have to be like the, the hotel across the street elevated up and, and everything, you know, above flood stage, and the requirements continue to grow on that, so, it, it seems like it's, it's, it provides a really nice access to the lake for now, but there, it seems like there's more development potential for that site than what we might want to consider putting out there. So, that's that one, then the property at the end of 51st Street. There was a motel project, uh, destined for that site, and in fact, that site still hold, when, when we did the Taft Community Vision Plan, the, one of the things that the area residents requested the most was, can we stop the, the huge motel development along the bay? It's just, it was just walling off the bay from any views and access, and so, there's actually a moratorium on any more motel rooms in the Taft area, but this, there was a, there was an approved, um, site plan for this, this property, and so, there, there are 60 units, around 60 units left that can be developed in the Taft area, and we own them, so, there is some value to it beyond the, uh, the site. So, that project didn't go through, and, and so, the property owner came to us and said, you know, that he would like to sell the property, it had sort of been going down over the years, there was finally, all, it was, I mean, it was a rest home at some, one point in time, apparently, a really nice, um, operation, and then, kind of got down to where it was just a, a small restaurant, I think a portion of it had burnt down, and they'd opened just a, a little small restaurant in the, in the front. And so, that property owner asked if we were interested in purchasing it, and so, we did, and it was at the time when the cap, when, like I said, when we were doing the Taft Vision Plan, and we were seriously considering, uh, a project on that site that we, we called the, um, Orient Coast Weather and Tsunami Center. And since then, we've assembled a few extra pieces of property, of that, the house that you see there, that's labeled house, we assembled that piece of property in order to be able to have a little bit larger site for future development. We also did the redevelopment, a market study that I think you have in your packet, talks about the site, it was done, I think, in 2009, talked about, you know, the timing wasn't right to do something now, but it, that it, then, but it may, but we believe that it's starting to become that way, and we'd like to pose, be poised for that recovery when it happens. The recommendation for the, for the study was to do just that, and then look for, uh, proposals for some sort of a mixed-use development, that would have ground floor retail, and maybe either housing, motel, or condominiums associated with the project, and then it's, I think it'd be an important component to also include some public, uh, parking in that project. We think that a project like this could really, uh, could, could stimulate some of the other redevelopable sites in the Taft area, so, this is one that we think, uh, we should start thinking about real seriously here in the future. So, those are the three, let's see, I also wanted to mention that, um, there were, there, I think you have a memo from the city manager that talks about either selling property or leasing property, and we have examples of both, we've done both, for example, the property that Moses is on is leased property. You know, a land sale puts a property in private ownership, and it'll generate some income at the time of the sale, unless that, unless that value is used as an incentive to, to get the kind of development that you want, and sometimes that's the case, when you put conditions on development, then sometimes you have to discount the price of the property in order to accommodate those sorts of, uh, those conditions. The other is the land lease, which lowers the development cost for a project, so somebody can get in there and do a project much cheaper, because they don't have to buy the land, and still, then the agency can create an, us, income stream from that, the leasing of that land, which eventually would be turned over to the city, but it also, then if that project goes under, then the city's still has some control, the agency still has some control about the, of the future of that site, it may, it wouldn't necessarily just have to sit vacant anymore, because we could go out and do the same thing again, where, as if we sell the site and it goes under, then, uh, it goes, you know, you, we, we've lost control. So, those are the things that I wanted to discuss about, the redevelopment in the future, I'm interested in any comments that you might have, and, and if not, then we'll go to the next topic.
Comments?
I guess I'd be curious, um, next steps, uh, what, what do we, how do we proceed with either fleshing out some options on these, you know, even prioritizing these sites?
Yeah, I think it's a staff level, we need to put a little more time and effort into it, we're starting to work with the city manager a little bit more on what his thoughts are, and he's, he's the one that's pushing this forward, and so I think that we would, look at it a little bit more carefully from, from what it is that we think that we want, we're going to want to have those discussions with you and get some ideas, and then go out for, for some proposals, for a proposal, and see what sort of, uh, things that we get back, uh, in that regard. It was something that, um, I, I did when I was in Bedford, and it, it was, it was really interesting, the proposals that, that you got back from developers, and I think that there are developers who are sitting in, have been sitting in the wings now for about eight years, and they're anxious to get back in the game, so.
Okay, other comments? Yes, sir.
Kurt, it seems to me we've got an issue with the flood, flood plain here as well, on the 51st Street property. Do you imagine that being, uh, less than a serious issue?
Well, I think if we do, do the bulk of the development up at street level, rather than down on the, at the ground level, we should be able to accom, that, you know, that should accommodate that, that issue, so that we have parking underneath, maybe some covered parking underneath there. Or storage, it could be storage, those sorts of things are allowed in the flood, flood area.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Kurt, let's go on to, uh, the cultural center update.
Nikki Price is going to join me for this.
I see Nikki Price sitting down.
Hello, hello.
So, if you have any really hard questions, we have the right person. So, uh, the Lincoln City Cultural Center, last month, we had a discussion regarding the commercial kitchen hood project, and the issues with the exhaust fan. The exhaust fan. Uh, we believe the most feasible option is to complete the installation on the outside of the building, and we recommend, and we would screen it, it's some, uh, with an art feature, or some sort of an architectural element. We, the agency asked to see some screening options and, and get some sort of cost estimate before they made a decision on, on moving the, the project forward, and so we have that, some of those for you, we were able to get just a couple, it gives you an idea that there are options out there, and, uh, we have some associated costs with that. So, that, that might be one way that it could be handled, with a cost estimate of around $4,000 for, uh, to do some sort of a screening that would look like that. Uh, there, there's options, um, again, we're looking at the possibility of, of maybe that, that could be out a little further, and maybe that logo of the cultural center could be placed where that fan is, and still allow the air to move. One of the other options that Nikki was able to come up with, was some sort of an architectural art feature, uh, that would just screen it, and again, we think that this, this, this probably wouldn't cost any more than a couple of thousand dollars. And, um, would you like, did you have some stuff you wanted to add to that?
Um, yeah, well, we're still trying to get an exact ruling on what, how it can be screened, you know, how many inches away from the, the terminus of the fan, and, you know, there, there are some things that need to be, be, you know, secured in writing before we can continue with an RFP, but I think, I think that that brick, the, the brick picture that you saw is a pretty good representation of what might could, might be done.
Okay. Any discussion, comments? Mr. Ray Huggins.
Did you mention a cost on that brick, um, idea, Kurt?
Yeah, and it was around $4,000, something like that.
For just the plain brick, um, if we were to enter into a, you know, a public art, you know, a seek, a, a search for public art, you know, that, that would go up, but just, just to screen it with plain brick, in a non-decorative pattern, that's, that's the estimate that we received.
So, obviously, we're not asking you to approve any of these types of, of things this evening, we're just, want to show you that there are options out there, and there are some general costs, um, we were hoping tonight, the action, if we could take action this evening, it would be either stop or delay the project, or give it the go-ahead so the contractor could complete the fan installation, and get that up and running, and complete the work in the basement, and then over the next several months, we will compile some ideas and come back to you, and, and make final decisions on how, how it could be screened.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Go to your next slide there.
Sure.
That, if you, you took that same feature and repeated it on the other side of the main door, I think that would be something I, that would be way cool, and it would, it would be the same feature on both sides, and if it can meet this stuff for the clearance, I, that to me is a preference over the, the other, which is just on one side of the door, you know, but I mean, this would balance it, but that's a, again, that's my opinion, but I like this, if, if you, if it can, would be worked out that it, um, and maybe it has to be, is, is the center swirly, is that the actual fan?
Well, what you see there is just our, our logo, you know, the jaggedy version of that swirl.
Well, I just, I was thinking, if, if, I mean, even if you use that kind of lattice work type thing, with, with the fan blowing, you know, through a hole, made something similar to that, would look like a piece of art, that to me would be a smart way to do it, relatively inexpensive, and, uh, anyway, that's my.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, thank you, because this is what I needed to see, what a screening might look like, and I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Ryan, that either one of these would work well, and I think incorporating the, uh, the logo, in this case, and the other one, but, uh, I'm surprised at how nice even the fan had, you and the brick one, blends right in, uh, by having the two, and, and I, I would agree with, uh, Mr. Ryan's comments of balancing the sides, especially with the lattice work, uh, would be a nice, nice touch, so, I, for me, they both would fit, and would leave it up to, um, the contractor and, and ultimate cost, but my move would be to move ahead, um, with this, because I find them both acceptable, and we could work out the details.
Okay, other comments?
Yeah, Raj, I think we ought to give approval for it to move ahead with the fan, installing the rest of the fan, and come back later with a way to screen it, because I think there's, there's options out there, and I don't think they're going to be that expensive, and I know we need to get the, uh, the hood installed and things like this, so it's kind of, you know, go ahead with that part, and then get the screening without afterwards.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
So, moved?
Second. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Stall.
And, and thanks to Nikki for being able to get that done so quickly, she was able to call in favor, she knows artists and stuff. So, we have just a few minutes left, and some of you probably have heard something about a wall and, uh, the D-Lake School and stuff, so we have a few pictures for you, and we thought we would update you, uh, as we have time, so, in November, this is what it looked like, uh, we never really knew why the, uh, wall wasn't brick, it was just like this, and so, I actually was able to talk to Wayne Belmont, uh, not Wayne Belmont, Fred Wright, today, uh, he was, he, he came in 1979, and he worked for the school district for many, many years, as many of you know, and he said it was like that when he got here, and he assumed it was because the, the, the brick was absorbing so much moisture that it was causing moisture on the inside of the building, because he said, we never had any problem with that wall, but it was all the other walls that he'd ended up going around and repointing the brick, and, and sealing it and stuff, so he said he, he thought that might be the case, well, so what happened here, Nikki called me late in the afternoon with this emergency, as you can kind of see there in the upper corner where there's a little dark line now, that whole, this, the whole side on the right-hand side just separated from the building and dropped about four inches, and it moved four inches towards the state park, and hung there precariously, blowing in the wind, you can see how it's, how it's dropped there, and how it separated from the building, and as the wind would blow, it would go like this, and so, uh, we hurriedly contacted Quaid Construction, and they were able to call out the troops, and we got that wall torn down, where they, they brought in, we brought in Andy Stricker, a, a structural engineer, took a look at it, and said, yeah, it has to come down immediately, and, and it can't be resalvaged, so don't worry about that, and he said, while you're at it, you need to take the other one down too, because I'm sure, he was sure they were both in the same condition, so, we went ahead and had them both removed, and, as you can see here, is, uh, you know, in the picture on the right, you can see the civic power, uh, garages, so you know the direction, so the wall is just separated even towards the state park. Uh, so the walls came down, you can see that there was some sort of a tar emulsion put on that wall, there was, the, there were boards attached to the wall, and then this structure was attached to that, so what's happened was, is that the corrosion of the treated lumber probably that attached it to the wall caused the nails to corrode, and then it fell down, so that's all been cleaned up now, it's sitting looking like this, and we are, are, um, going to start looking at some alternatives for you, for addressing this problem, and we will be getting back to you with that, so, wanted to let you know what was going on, see if you had any questions, I'm sure you've had people ask you what's going on, and, um, we have, this is, and, you, what, did you have other new information?
Uh, well, since the, since the walls were both removed on Friday, uh, that we've seen quite a bit of rain, so that rain, uh, has already started to enter the building in the, the downstairs closet, now, I'm not sure exactly, you know, what part of the wall is receiving the most rain, but, you know, it's, since that, that project's happening, we've seen a lot of leaking downstairs, um, and then the roofers were out today to do, you know, to, to look at what's happened, and there's going to need to be some repairs done right away, uh, where the, where the entrance brick joins the pitched part, so that we can stop the leaking until we figure out the best way forward.
So, you, you feel the leaking is coming from the roof as opposed to it coming in through the wall?
It's hard to say, um, while the, while the wall was being, you know, demolished, the grunt, the gutters were taken off, and so, a lot of the rain, you know, that big downpour from last Wednesday, Thursday, that's when we saw the most water coming in, and that's when the gutter was detached, so we think maybe if the, once the roof gets detached on top, and the gutter's reattached, the next rainstorm's going to show us, what, you know, the, where we really stand with that, with that brick, and where with that brick, and where the water might be coming from.
We had problems with that in the past, and so we were able to put some effort into the roof and into the downspout system, and pretty much alleviated the problem.
It was totally dry down there until this.
We think it's a downspout problem more than the wall.
We hope.
Any other comments? Mr. Mayor.
Nikki, I was impressed. I drove by one time today and saw you on the roof, so I, I want to compliment you for, you know, the close work that you observed.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Well, it's always easier to see things, you know, first person rather than have to try to explain it to you on the ground.
My gosh. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have a public hearing, and we don't have any resolutions, so unless there's any other discussion, I will adjourn this meeting. Can we take a five-minute break before we start the council meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
All right. Meeting adjourned.